Alright, so we're gonna get out of it, but I guess I'll run.
Joe said, do you have a call without me?
Yes.
Said the agenda Zoom like is from five twenty-two, can someone send today's? My text is, okay. Hey, I'm grateful.
And you're dressed.
Bring it, bring the heat.
Alright, well, I'll call the order at three oh eight for the town council study committee. So with it being a hybrid meeting, we'll just take attendance by roll. Jill Leith.
Here.
Curtis Potter.
Here.
Kelly something?
Kelly, or, I.
Kelly Seven.
Hi.
Tom Di.
Here.
Bobber.
Here.
Carolyn Balter. Jeff Carlson is here. Joe is signing on, it looks like, so let's get him ready at the moment. And then just with our audience, Peter here today and Donna.
Here.
Joe, you with us?
I think so. Can you hear me, see me?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay.
Alright, we just took attendance, so we took attendance for you. So I guess I'll entertain a motion to accept today's agenda.
So moved.
I can.
Alright. Jill Leith.
Hi.
Curtis Barnes.
Hi.
Kelly Seven.
Hi.
I'm Jason, bye. Bobber.
Hi.
Carolyn Balter. Joe Grouse.
Hi.
Vice Chair, Hoota. Alright, so just to note, we are recording, so this can be posted to YouTube at a later date. Moving us on to the approval of the May first minutes.
Postpone, I don't have them.
Alright, we'll skip that again. And then we'll just move through, we don't have our potential guest speaker. I've informed this that folks he's been talking to were mired into getting ready for the season. So we haven't been able to schedule them yet, so we'll move on. So the next item of business, the item that we had on the last agenda and we kind of pushed. But move forward, I know this is an item that Joe had wanted to put on, so maybe I'll let him comment on it, but it was just a discussion on our next steps and kind of discussion of where we wanted to move forward to after all of the recent round of speakers and public comment and things that we've, we've moved on to. You wanna tee that up at all, Joe?
Yeah, I, I think, um, my guess is everyone on the committee kind of knows where I'm coming from, but, you know, I feel like we've spent five months or so researching the forms of town government, the characteristics of those forms of town government, kind of their pros and cons. I think we've had input from a number of excellent outside speakers and people knowledgeable in this whole process. And at the same time, a number of us, you know, Caroline, Curtis, me to a certain extent, you know, have initiated and sought invitations from homeowners associations and other groups. And I think if we're gonna go out there and, and talk to them, I'm of the opinion, you know, that we have to have kind of a proactive, positive kind of story, trying to avoid saying sales pitch. And so I just think the, you know, we're at a point with, with the group now, the nine of us that are voting. I, you know, let's, let's, let's put our cards on the table and, and, you know, sort of go forward, I guess. Now, you know, I don't know, Jeff, what you as, as the chair or what the group's there, you know, maybe it's a matter of we ought to go around the table and let people express their opinions in any way that you folks want to go about it. I just, I just think, you know, it's, it's, again, personally, I think, you know, that we should go out there with a proactive story about town council form of government and why we think it's a good idea and gather people's reaction to that and go forward with, you know, creating the article that, you know, for ten meeting twenty twenty-five that Curtis suggested. Anyway, so I'll stop talking.
Curtis?
Uh, thank you. I would love to do what I call an exercise. I'd love to invite everyone on the committee to come back next week or next meeting with an outline of what they think we should be doing. Sort of make it a workshop session. You know, I would put down my thoughts and you put your thoughts. And let's just share them around the table and see how many of them merge, how many are at variance, how many are at difference? So I, I thought that would be a fun kind of exercise to do, which I would propose.
John?
I was gonna propose maybe something similar, which is more of a straw poll, just for us to talk today about where, where each of us is thinking in terms of Joe's query. Are we ready to move forward? Moving forward allows us to speak more effectively for the summer civic associations meetings. And I think I detect that we're feeling like five months in and we want to check to see where we are and we're concerned that we should be further along than, than we are. I, I myself am not sure that we need to be further along than where we are, because we've all been working hard to look at what we've looked at and I mean, I know some people have made up their minds, I don't know about other people. But it's possible that we just don't yet have enough information about how the town council would be the best for Antucket, or if we have exhausted all the other options. You can hear where, where my biases, but I think if we want to check our group process and compare notes, I think of that as being a straw poll, which I know we've talked about before. Curtis, it sounds like you're thinking about it more in terms of an extended workshopping.
I'm thinking that I would come in with a piece of paper outlining what I would see as the framework for a town council, pass it around, everyone could look at, even send it out in advance, but actually I was thinking we come in and really let me read to you what I think I would like to do and have Jill say, here's what I would like to do. And then listen and hear how many things are congruent, how many things aren't. So that was my idea. And I'd say if we each had time to work on it at home, rather than trying to digest it all here in one afternoon unprepared, it would be a better product. That's why I was saying, make it a workshop exercise that we come prepared to do.
Joe?
I have a process question. If we are to put forward an Warren article by this group, if that was the ultimate goal, which I know it is for a lot of people.
The vote was to do.
I understand, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah.
If that is the goal, in that Warren article, what is supposed to go into that Warren article for the first step? Because this is a long process. This isn't like, oh, we're gonna pass that and go to town council. I mean, it doesn't work that way. So the Warren article I thought was just for the voters to say, yes, we're gonna go on to the next step.
They already said that. This is the next step. What do you see as the next? I see the next step as saying a town council with nine members, four-year terms, that's the proposal that I would take to the town council, to the.
And then a charter commission to rewrite the charter?
And there's two parts to it. There's an article and a charter. And the charter can be contingent on or part of the process of voting to proceed to develop the town council. And then you do your turn. That it directs you then to prepare the charter. And I guess that's part of our job too.
But there's a charter commission.
No, there doesn't have to be.
We don't have to do that?
No, we can.
No. No.
They don't have to be elected?
No. The charter commission? Nope.
We don't have to do any of that.
The, the other part is to go through a special act through the legislature.
Yeah.
To change the charter.
We don't want to do that.
Well, that's, you either have to do it that way or you have to use the charter commission.
Oh, real? Oh, well, which is the simple way that John Georgio.
The special act is the simple way, and then that comes back.
Becomes a bylaw and a special act, isn't it, a two-part?
And then it comes back to the ballot ultimately.
Avoiding town meeting.
Well, it still has to go to town meeting.
This would, but then that, that doesn't, the commission.
Correct.
Doesn't have to do that.
That would go to the ballot though, so that more people would be voting than actually go to town meeting.
Correct.
I mean, ju- just, I'm sorry, yeah, just to stick my nose in the air, Jill, I don't, I think I've always been going forward with the, with the expectation that we'd be a special acts process. If, if we were to create a charter commission, I think we'd be adding two or three more years. I mean, I think this is still gonna be two years, if, even if the town meeting next year and the voters approve it, still gonna take a couple of years to do. But I think the charter commission is the slower of the two options looking, facing us.
No, I agree, but none of us have ever talked about what process we want to pursue, that's what I'm saying. So we're, we're like jumping to conclusions. I think we all need to be on the same page about the process. A large extent of the process is the most important part. That's where people pick everything apart. So do we want to talk about that a little bit more, or is everyone like, no, that's fine, we'll just do it this way?
Well, I think we're all been that, in that direction as Joe indicated, but it's up to you.
We've never talked about it as a committee that I'm aware of, Libby.
Well, I thi- I would think if you wanted a sort of an authoritative opinion of that, we could either go to John Georgio, but I think, you know, going to the Collins Center folks, go to Anthony and ask, you know, ask them to sort of educate us on what are the two, I'm pretty sure there's just two options, charter commission or special.
That's what I read too. I just didn't know which way you all wanted to proceed. I mean, if you guys want this to pass, there is a case to be made, it ought to go to the ballot.
It has to.
It has to be.
It will, it will go to the ballot.
Yeah, it will, but the, the elected charter commission is a whole different thing. That then you're.
Right, I guess it's my understanding too, that if you have an elected charter commission, you're then at some point obligated to change the charter. Because they're elected for that specific purpose and it also requires, you know, a certain level of signatures of registered voters.
Fifteen percent.
To initiate that process.
Yeah.
Which I, I think is okay. I know when we originally kind of came through and even through town meeting, you know, John really was pointing, I think, more towards the special act, that's something that they've seen more commonly. But I think we can certainly commit to do it. And personally, just to kind of throw my two cents into the ring for it too, is I, I really think deciding which way to go, charter commission or one way or the other. I think before we even get that far, we still have to do the job that town meeting has already asked us to do. We still have to, whether, like a personal Jeff Carlson opinion, whether we agree with the final result or not, we've been tasked by town meeting to create a charter for public discussion for what town council on Antucket would look like. And I don't really feel like we can even decide personally, one way or the other, for a form of government without doing the exercise of seeing what, what that looks like.
That's fine, but at the same time, we have to, if they, if we write an article that says, yeah, this is what we want to do, and they endorse it and they vote on it and say, yeah, we still have to have the next step prepared. So to me, it's all part of the same, that's all I'm saying. To me, having the, the long-term plan is just as important. If, in the short term, if you all want to vote on whether or not we want to do town council, that's fine with me. I'm just saying in that, we have to have a process for being successful. And we should all be in agreement on what that process is.
No, I, I agree, and I, I don't think that, you know, I disagree with that, but I think also drafting a charter is also integral to deciding which process we want to go down. And it, they're both a little chicken and egg, but I think from our end, we need to at least start that process of deciding what a new charter would look like, and then we can use our consultant to point us in the right direction to effectively push that forward, because if we're gonna go the charter commission route, we should just all stop right now, because that charter commission's gonna be tasked with the same job that we're already being tasked with. So that, to me, is duplicating happens. So that's.
So if we come up with a charter, I, I agree with you, the implementation is gonna be critical. But as Bridgewater Town Manager. No, Bridgewater.
Jeff, could you speak a little louder?
I'm sorry, the, the Bridgewater Town Manager was telling us
that they, they had some trouble on implementation, right? So they had this charter, like we're gonna create a charter. And then you, you have a plan for implementation. And that just goes along with it. Now, I, I'm of the mind that we make this thing. Okay? And in the process of making it and doing the work, there's a lot of work to be done. Like, we're gonna be debating whether this thing is appointed, whether that thing is elected, all of these things that go on the charter. And there is a lot of debate there. Like, that's the meat of this. Whether we go forward or not is like, is a minor technicality. We, the, the work is in doing the charter. I, that's, and I agree with Joe, I think we should just do it.
But that's part of the charge of the town meeting article too, is to create a town council proposal, and the charter supports the town council proposal. I see it as necessarily a two-part process.
Curtis, are you saying that we would have to put the work in to sketch out the charter and then it goes to either the charter commissioner?
Well, I'll, I'll give you an example, if it's okay. My concept is a nine-member town council. Four-year terms. Existing select board roll in to the end of their term, so we have some continuity. Those are part of the article, but then under that is whether we go to precincts, how you, how many, how you elect them. The, the charter has things that make the nine members and the things that I'm talking about in the article proposal implement, that's how I see it. So I would come in next meeting with about an eight or 10 item list of what I think a town council should be like. And I've given you three or four of those ideas. You can debate them, agree, disagree, whatever. But when we agree on the frame, then we build the charter to support that frame.
Are we, my understanding when we had Libby come in to speak to us was that if we go, if we were to go forward with the town council form of government, if that's what we choose, because that's also part of our job, are we going to recommend town council form of government? It, it wasn't just that we definitely are, it was that we were looking over and the select board wanted us to look over all the other ones.
And we have looked at.
And we have been, and I think we are, and I'm doing that now.
Yeah.
And we're trying to decide, are we ready to decide? And once we decide, what I'm trying to remember is I thought Libby had told us that if we go ahead with the town council form of government, that it's a huge job in part because we're also sketching out the charter. And a town meeting, when somebody asked about looking at, at the charter, Curtis, you got up, I think, or was it Joe, and said, well, that's part of our job. So are we saying that if we're moving forward with the town council form of government, if that's our decision, are we saying that we are going to, that's our purview, to sketch out the new charter before it goes to a special act or the charter commission? Or are we, are we, are we already deputized as a kind of?
Well, let Joe answer that.
Well.
Alright, Joe.
Well, I, I think we all, we are already empowered to A, recommend converting to town council, and B, do the arms and legs works, that arms and legs work that both summarize in terms of writing a charter and you know, sort of making some decisions, all of Curtis' point about how many counselors and which things are elected and which things are appointed. But I, I still think that this group, you know, we have to decide, okay, are we done studying and researching and are we going forward with recommend, you know, the, sort of the, what I, I still think of as the primary charge of Curtis' article, which is recommending to the town, to the voters, to, you know, the, the select board, the people that sort of put us in place, recommending that we're gonna, we believe that there are X reasons why it makes sense to convert to a town council form of government, and we're going forward with that. We're gonna go out and sort of tell that story to a, a large, well, a number of citizens groups, homeowners associations and the like. And then we still have to spend time together, more likely than not guided by the folks in the Collins Center in terms of creating the actual document, you know, a new revised town charter. But if, the thing that I've been sort of, you know, I guess concerned about the last couple of meetings is are we, you know, is a majority, are, are, are a majority of us ready to go forward this and sort of do the work, you know, promote it? Or are we still mixed? And again, I'm, I'm, I'm of the mind that it's time to go forward, but you know, may, maybe Curtis' idea is the way that we kind of, everybody puts their cards on the table, that's fine by me, so.
I, in a way, the, the reason I said it is, I'd like to hear why not? I'd like to hear from the people who don't think we should move forward with a town council other than we've been doing it this way for a long time. I'd like to hear why not, why B, C, or D are better? So I'm looking for that kind of feedback in what I propose as the exercise, so we'd all be able to come here and put it on the table and say here, and defend each opposition paper.
Why not do it now?
Well, because maybe you haven't had enough time to think about it. I'm, you know, I've written mine. So, but I, I don't want to feel that I'm pushing anyone on this group, which I enjoy and respect highly to do something you're not ready to do, which is why I'm saying, give us notice and in the, in two weeks, let's come back and each person, it's like a seminar, you're defending your position paper. And come on, we've done it. And I like that process. I like to make the argument and hear the, the feedback and come back and respond.
Brooks?
Sure, Donna?
Yeah, um, I think we've had so many meetings. I think instead of, and Curtis, I do appreciate, you know, your suggestion about doing that, but isn't everybody kind of prepared to say, yes, I am for this? Or no, I have hesitations because of something, because we've, we've heard from Collins, we've heard from MMA. Um, we've heard from Mark Ls. We've had quite, uh, we've quite, received quite a lot of information. So maybe it is time today, if people are comfortable, to say, yes, let's move forward. Or give a reason why not.
May I ask a question? Three or four-year terms? Have you thought about that?
Yeah.
Okay. Donna, three or four-year terms for.
I think four, and then out.
Oh, and out?
Well, yeah, and not re-elected again, and then they could come back in again another time. Four years is good, because you have a year to kind of figure out what's going on, and then you can be much more effective. And then it gives time for people to come, somebody else to come in, into your slot.
And yet many communities allow two consecutive terms or even three and then one out. So there's a debatable point.
Very debatable.
I actually think it would be fun to be able to, to debate some of that stuff. Sorry, sorry to interrupt, Jeff.
Well, I think we're going to, right? I mean, that's the, the Curtis' dream, dream meeting.
The important stuff.
Well, actually, before we start debating on how many terms, are we all on the same page about moving forward?
Carolyn, first?
Oh, that's why I was suggesting taking a straw poll. So that rather than slap it down and, and, you know, a kind of definitive stance, since we're all trying to figure out the group process right here, I think a straw poll would be more appropriate, more fitting.
Right. Alright, poll.
Yeah, or we could call it a sense of the meeting, which is what we call it at town meeting.
Second. Motion.
Fine. Is that a motion?
I make a motion to take a straw poll.
And Bo's second.
Any discussion on that?
Vice Chair, I, I, just to be a hundred percent honest, I've been, there's so much work for special town meeting going on right now in the SDR articles that, like, that's been my entire weekend and now. I, I haven't thought about this at all, so I am not prepared to vote. I like Curtis' idea about preparing for a week or two and then coming back and then defend it. I, I, though I will abstain if we're gonna vote on anything like that. I, that, I know, I don't think that was in our agenda as well.
I'm gonna make one too. I actually don't think it's necessary to do, to do our job, to take that straw poll right now. Because we're asked to, to do a job to bring it back to town meeting to decide. We don't have to decide whether we're going to town council or whether we're going to stay open to town meeting. That's for town meeting to decide. That's for the voters to decide. It's not for our group to decide. Our group has a job, and I, I brought it up just to look at it, and the last point there is special committee should not complete this work and submit an article enabling the transition to a town council structure no later than annual town meeting twenty twenty-four, which we obviously know is passed for various reasons.
A FinCom amended that, by the way. Fin, FinCom amended.
That's the, that's the FinCom motion.
Uh-uh, because it said, or at the next appropriate town.
That's, they amended it on the floor. That's correct.
Yeah.
So, but that's our job. Our job isn't for our group to say, we're going to town council. Here's the documentation everybody ratified, filled through. It would say, here's what a charter for town council would be. This is what we think it would be and what makes sense. Vote it up or down. It's your decision as the voters. We're not here to substitute our judgment for town meeting. We're here to do the job that the legislative branch of government tasked us to do. And I know that's a little soapboxy, but that's just what I personally think. It's, we don't all have to agree that we should all go to town council, but I think I would hope that we're all on the committee with the idea of the people and the voters of the town who asked for us to do this should get the choice. Not that they have to do it, but they should get the choice.
Caroline?
I, I'm, I'm aware of that and I'm, I'm, I'm prepared to do the work. But I know that the select board has reminded us that it is important in our task to look at all the other possible forms of government. And that, as I've understood it, is for the reason that it is also our job to figure out, do the meat of the work to figure out what is best for an Antucket, that's our job. And if we decide in our process and all the information that we're getting, that town council is, it is not fitting, I, I don't, my understanding is it would not be our task to go through with preparing something that we had decided was not fitting, so.
That's not the article, though. The article says, prepare an article for a town council and vote it up or down. Unfortunately, I, I know, I hear what you're saying.
True. Chair. How do we all understand the select board's remonstrance to us and saying, we will, we will give you the money for the the consultant, but we want to make sure that you guys are looking at all the other possible forms of government. If you're going to go through with the work, then please do it efficiently by looking at all the options. How do you understand that?
I think Joe wants to say something. He has his hand up.
Right, we'll go to Curtis and then to Joe.
No, no, let Joe.
Alright, Joe.
Um, I, I guess two things. One, I guess I would, I would take exception, when I put my hand up, Jeff, I would take exception to Jeff's position. I, I think that we do have to, as a committee, take a position that, you know, we think the time is right to convert to town council for reasons A, B, C, and D, whatever those things are. Because I don't think that we can, either in terms of putting out an article at next year's town meeting, but even more immediately, whether it's me or Curtis or Caroline or any of us who are gonna be potentially going out and talking to citizens groups, I don't think you can go out and sit there and say, I don't think you can go out and sit there and say, well, you know, we're sort of thinking about town council, but we kind of like open town meeting and maybe there's ways to make. I mean, if we go out there and just sort of be wishy washy about it all, you know, all, all we're gonna, all we're gonna communicate to the, those people that we talk to anyway is, eh, you know, they're, they're doing, they're, they're researching this and, um, you know, whether it may be it's a good idea, maybe it's not. I, I, I guess I, I'm of the, of the mind that if you don't go out there and say, you know, town council, open town meeting is, has outlived its usefulness. Town council is the right step for this town because of these reasons. And we're, you know, we're out here talking to all you people at this, this homeowners association or this civic group to encourage you to think about this and ask for, that you're supportive, you're supportive town meeting next year as well as at the ballot. And, you know, um, I just don't, I, I, I don't think if we don't, if we don't do that, you know, it's just gonna be warm milk. So, anyway. And I, and the, and the other, just one other thing is, um, you know, on Caroline's point, I think we, I think we have absolutely done what the select board asked us to do. We have taken extra time to in get, you know, we engaged the consultant, we use their resources to talk to us about open town meeting, about representative town meeting, about, uh, town council and some of the things, the pros and cons of those forms of government, and I think we've, um, I think we've, we've certainly taken the time we needed to take at the request of the select board to educate ourselves about those things. And again, personally, I think we're, I think, I still think what I thought at the beginning, which is, we need to change the town council, so.
Well, my feeling was that the town meeting voted for us to proceed, and then the select board amended that, which was, from my perspective, a little edgy. If, if town meeting votes something and then they say, well, conditional upon you doing this. However, we have been looking at all of the options. A mayor council is not in our purview. Well, might be if we are declared a city. Town council, representative town meeting, Barnstable was representative before they changed. The town government study committee that I served on went to Falmouth and we met with the representative of, of the representative town council, and of course, we had open town meetings. So, um, the only thing we haven't had is a direct presentation from a representative town meeting person. But the guy in the Collins Center in Brookline, that was a, is a representative town meeting. I, I'm agreeing with Joe. I think in working through it, we looked at all the four options and our charge was a town council. But we've heard about the other things, and I haven't heard anyone banging their fists on the table and say, I want a representative town meeting form of government. If you feel that way, I'd like to hear it.
Donna, I think you were next.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to say, whatever we decide, um, it has to be a unified approach from all of our members. And, um, Jeff, you had said something about, um, it, the last word is with the voters, and it is. So if we decide, yes, as a committee, we, uh, do recommend town council for these reasons. We go and speak to a number of organizations all over the island and then come to voting in a year, whatever, and they say, voters say yes, or voters say no. So they do have the voice at the end. It's their choice, but we have to have a decision. All of us, if, and I can't vote, but I can say for representing the non-voting taxpayers, the advantages are incredible. So we definitely want that. And we have a large population. We want a voice in our government. So we would want town council, no question. And we have meeting, uh, we meet once a month, the non-voting taxpayers. And I report every time we, um, have a meeting, and I certainly will bring this to their attention as well.
It's on Saturday and I'm gonna be here.
Oh, good.
To listen.
Joe, is your hand back up?
It is, um. I, I was just gonna suggest, um, you know, I, I get the sense from folks' comments that not, we're not quite ready, you know, to do a straw poll or, or to sort of pursue, um, anything close to what Curtis suggested. But I, the more that we've been talking, I, I think Curtis' idea is probably a good one, in the sense that the, the night of us go back, we think about this, we sort of, you know, each take, I don't know, you know, three or four minutes to outline what we think the direction and the, and the next steps ought to be for the committee and
Then take a straw poll.
Well, and I, and I, and I actually think one of the things that, that Donna said was, you know, she said it has to be unified. One of the things that's been bothering me, and I know I've tried to chat with some of you all individually, is I really, really didn't want to uh, you know, get to a point where we sort of had a, a five to four balance on the, on the committee. I was really hoping we can get where if it isn't nine to zero, we were sort of a, 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 a fairly substantial majority of us felt that town council was the way to go, or, or some other decision. I, you know, maybe, maybe I'm wrong and you know, the, the sense of all of us is that we should propose, I don't know, modifications to open town meeting. But let's, you know, let, let's, let's take two weeks, you know, think about it and come back and have a substantive, um, you know, we're, we're all prepared, we're all ready to know that that's the, the purpose of that meeting is to, you know, come out with a unified position at the end. And I just think time is a little bit of, and again, I'm changing subjects here a little bit, but time is, is a little bit of the essence because I know Caroline and I and a few others and Curtis, I think, have, uh, you know, committed to talk to various groups. And I really think we should have that decision made and some sort of a sales pitch or position paper or handout so that we can, you know, at least start our conversations with a, you know, kind of a positive thoughtful message. I'm done.
Well, I think I've been waffling on sharing my thoughts because I'm not sure if they make more sense for this meeting or this hypothetical meeting we're talking about. And rather than sharing them now, what does seem more appropriate is a second, is a meeting in a week or two, where we've taken this time all to really prepare something that's substantive and then
Defend your dissertation in other words.
Yep.
I won't be here.
In two weeks.
Not that, oh, in two weeks, yes. I can do it June twelve.
I thought you guys put down a date in that email for next week.
We have June twelve and twenty six.
I came in today filled with some, um, questions after talking to a bunch of people about, um, town council and, and how it would look, kind of like our, in our last meeting before we had the presentation. Just trying to imagine like how it would affect zoning. Um, I have, somebody asked me a really good question about the funds. We were talking about that in the last meeting when we had the presentation with, um, Ls. Um, and I had asked him some questions about this and I, I'm just trying to figure out like what would it look like? And so it would be helpful to me, and we could take some time today just to flesh out what we all think that would look like. Because that's me, where I am, I'm still trying to figure out how would town council fit for Nantucket. So if we're gonna spend the next meeting trying to vote on what our position is, I, I'd like to use some time today to roll out some of the pasta.
No, I don't. I think what I would envision us doing is structuring this today around various functions, advisory boards or regulatory boards as we construct the charter. So for zoning, we're gonna have to allocate time to see, you know, if we have a planning board or how the planning board selected or appointed or whatever it is. Or if we want to mirror what we're doing now, um, in the charter. I mean, that's important to have these discussions on it. So we structure this. We lay out and we say, twang, merits, and I think we'll get into.
For the chair, um, I, so I, this is I feel like we all as a group, we're, we're a little confused about whether we are a green light to just go and do sketching out what town council looks like. Or if we are needing to vote amongst ourselves because there may be some amongst us that are not yet convinced of that. So I think that's a, that's a point of confusion that I have, that we're still trying to figure out. So for me, i- in order for me to get behind town council um, and be effective at doing the work of that, I still need to figure out, well, like if, if zoning, um, is gonna just be a simple majority with town council instead of a two-thirds vote, like that for me is a huge question that that I need to understand philosophically because that's a major change. Or like, um, uh, somebody asked me the other day, oh, so would, what would happen to the voters if we go to a town council? And I said, well, the voters would just be voting on the council persons. And the person said, you mean the voters would have no other thing to vote on? Like that, they couldn't get that into their mind. And so I think on Nantucket, and not because it's been a tradition forever and ever and ever, but because of how high our citizen involvement is here and the council, the Collins Center has said to us, it doesn't matter if you think a thousand voters is low, it doesn't matter if two thousand ballots are, you think they're low. In fact, Nantucket has a really high participation rate, whether it's the citizens' articles or being on commissions and committees and boards. And so if we're changing all of that philosophically and giving all of that to nine council people, I, I'm still trying to get my head around how that would work for this island because we've got people who are always complaining about the five select board members. And now we're gonna have nine, sorry. All the negativity, you know, we're used to just kind of dumping it on those five and, um, or sometimes FinCom or whatever, planning board. But so it would, it would then go to nine people and no voters. And that, in my mind, is, is such a huge change. So I want to understand some of the implications of that.
Sorry, one second, Donna. I'm just gonna go first because I can't.
Should I speak?
I'm gonna go real quick and then we'll go to you, Donna.
Okay.
One second. I think all those questions are important questions, but they're all answered through the charter and how we structure it and how we debate it to be. And I, I think even from what we learned, you know, from, from the Collins Center two times ago where we talked about ways, whether it's you know, through, throughout, right, or other citizen petition to overturn decisions of the council, there's lots of options to engage, but I think that's the work of what we're supposed to be doing. And those questions right now about how zoning will work, or even how many counselors there's gonna be, I know we probably all have different ideas, whether it's nine and four-year terms or nine and three or seven, however it passes out. But we have to do the charter to answer those questions or to debate those questions. Because they're unanswerable right now because they're gonna be based upon our personal opinion and not what's put together. We're rushing to the end. I mean, I, I, I think I'll, I'll use a corny Midwest analogy because that's where I'm from is, we're trying to decide if the cake tastes bad without trying to take a bite of the cake, right? Like, we're looking at it, I bet that's gross. But we don't really know what went into it or what made, we gotta make the cake and then we can try it and
Cake is the chart.
Yeah, the cake is the charter, right? Like, those zoning questions, whether it's there, some of them have state law that back up that requires certain things. But I think, I think we have the right people to help us with the Collins Center to step us through all of the parts of the charter. Charters from town to town are all unique, but they don't differ so wildly that one of them is way out of the space, right? Like, there's certain forms and functions that always need to be addressed. I think having them help us through it one at a time and debating it out, get those answers. And I think even just committing to a process to start answering those questions is really positive progress for us to explain to the community to say, we've heard a lot of different, different resources and different forms. We're starting on this process for our discussion and to move through constructing it. And then we can really see if it's the right choice for us at the end. I think prematurely deciding one way or the other without even seeing what the charter would look like. It's just guess. All right, I'll go to Donna next to that problem.
Oh, thank you, Jeff. Um, I just wanted to say, I guess it goes back to one of the reasons why, um, I would be in my, uh, my non-voting taxpayers would be interested in is that contrary to what we have presently, a town council would afford our citizens to have a much more active role and more frequently. Um, and also, um, from what, uh, Mark L said, there are commissions. So you have a commission, which hopefully non-voting taxpayers could be a part of. And then you have your councilman and so forth and so on. So, um, a town council versus annual town meeting, town council, that all of our citizens could attend when they were interested in certain subjects. They have more participation with the town council.
I, I just, um, you know, I apologize, but these minutes reflect a lot of the things you're talking about. And they went out an hour or two before the meeting, but when you look at what Mark said, they have zoning, planning, FinCom, all of those committees or commissions who are advisory, but they're all involved. Everyone, I mean, a question comes up and it gets kicked to a committee. So we're not abandoning the fundamental structure that Nantucket has relied on for a long time. We're just implementing it potentially a different way. And some of that, I hope, has, is reflected in these minutes, which, you know, you may not have had time to read, so. The ones that I did at three o'clock this afternoon and sent to Jeff. If you read them, good for you. Speed read. No, these are, these are this one, and then Kelly has some from the week before. So we have two sets of minutes to address at our next meeting, by the way. But a lot of what you're referring to, Mark said, is encompassed in the charter in Barnstable. So we're not taking anything away. We're involving more people in a different way.
I think Caroline, if this is all helpful. Once we've gone through what this charter is, if you want to vote against it at the end, you're, I think that's where the vote is gonna actually matter. And like Joe said, I mean, I hope we all will be mostly aligned. I do, because it's not gonna look good, um, if we're not. But that's really the vote that matters. So you can go through and debate and learn more about how our process works now and how it impacts people. Because I know it, it's still, some of this is still a little new to you, it sounds like. And then you can decide at the end. I mean, that's where I think you're gonna have some liberties, right?
Through the chair. So I, that, that's what I'm really trying to boil down right now is the, the clarity of our, our order is to just go sketch out a town council. That's what we're gonna do. And yes, it got amended by a select board. They wanted us while we were doing that to look at the other possibilities. Why? Why did they want us to do it? Because maybe if we had heard, we haven't actually heard that much about mayoral, which I'd still like to hear something about. But if we had heard something about representative or mayoral form of government, would it have been our purview to say, oh, wait, that looks much better actually than town council all of a sudden? Because I think what I'm hearing your interpretation is, and certainly Joe and Jeff and Curtis, is no, that, that would go against, um, what we're supposed to do, which is just write out what a town council looks like.
I totally hear what you're saying, and that's their interpretation of it. I think we had to go through that because we need to know what the I think we had to go through that because we need to know what the forms are because that's really the defense and I said this earlier. That's how we say, oh, we prefer this one, and if you prefer another one, speak up and say it, I think it's fine. But, um, I think the select board, and I'm not speaking for them, but hearing what they said at their meetings. They just wanted to make sure that all those things were covered as well, because I think it's a new concept for them too. I mean, they're not sitting, unless Tom, you can tell me you guys have any secret meetings about.
They never have secret meetings.
I think it's, it's, it's normal for them to want that too, it's just something that hasn't, like, I. I get what you guys interpreted the way you do, I don't agree with your interpretation, but that doesn't mean that we don't all, all on the same page about where we're going. So I don't think that that matters.
I, I do appreciate that and, and I, I don't disagree is, you know, the legislative body passed something a certain way. But it also doesn't mean that we have to provide something to them without any context. Or anything that goes in or out, right? And I think that context that goes with whatever we decide in the end is where we encapsulate that discussion of. We also looked at X, Y, and Z in developing a final product that we voted on. And this is why we ultimately chose, right, like, I think we have to provide some reasoning at the end for. What our group's final recommendation is. But I think we also need to go through the steps that town meeting has asked us to do. To even frame out what context is needed for that, like. So it's not a, in only one way, I think it's a, you've asked us to put this together. Don't look at it this way, here's the context of how we got through all of our decision-making process as we went through this. And if ultimately the will of the group is to, to look at it completely different way or do something different. But I think we also have to go back and be accountable to town meeting and say.
We didn't make it.
We didn't do it, and this is why, and provide context to, to why that doesn't happen too.
Just a quick aside, uh, in looking at the variety of sources. Um, a mayor council system like Boston has, North Hampton where our chief of police, uh, came from has one. What you have is the chief executive then is the mayor, not a town manager. And the potential, if you tried to get a town manager, someone raised that with me in discussion. You could see a mayor and a town manager both being the power centers. And that could create chaos, so, um. Again, for a town like Nantucket, I think the town manager is Barnstable, I think the town manager form is better than a mayor council chair.
I, I am not advocating for the system, but it depends on the form, there's a weak, a weak mayor and a strong mayor. If we have a strong town manager instead of a strong select board, and that means that like we don't do the hiring. Like there are some towns where the select board hires department heads and things like that.
But they approve it, don't they?
We do, we have, we have a, we can submit a letter of disapproval at the, for, for, for that kinda stuff. But I, I, I would just, there, there's nuance in there, is, is my only point, so if that's. The will of the committee to have a presentation on that, that's something that can be considered, that's all I'm saying.
There is nuance, but yes. We're gonna have to catch this out, like. Why not? Why not?
I, I, I have just an observation that might be helpful. The, the committee can talk about process and mandate all day long and keep going on and on and on. You might be more effective to build on what Curtis is saying, if you could create. A quasi-term sheet of all the issues that are gonna go on, the structural issues. And then on each of those issues, two weeks from now or a week from now, that's when you bring up all of your issues. So you begin to move from philosophical to granular, and I think that might help everybody make some progress.
Anyone else?
Do you need a motion on my recommend, my request?
I, I think we could certainly just put that as our primary.
Make it as an agenda, is that okay with the chair?
Is that all right with you, Joe?
Yeah, no, fine by me, I, um, you're, you're driving the bus today, Jeff, but I'm, uh. Happy to go along, I, I, I think this is gonna be good. I'm good.
So for our next agenda, we'll make that primary focus everyone already, two weeks to kind of encapsulate their thoughts and.
June twelve. Defend your dissertation.
If we, um, is it, is it, is it possible if we're moving forward to. Consider what a mayor, mayoral form of government would look like because it is part of a town council form. Of government, is that accurate?
It's a council mayor form of government, not a town council.
Right, but can we still talk about that? Because I, I, I have a lot of curiosity about what that model would look like. For Nantucket, and we have, we've really not talked about that at all because we decided that our system supported.
I think it does support it now.
It does, however, it's really was.
Well, was there. North Hampton.
We can get the, actually, as the Collins Center shows, they can summarize that a little bit better, I think that was trying to remember. For what's out there. I think, did you have one more comment?
Uh, again, just to be helpful, Curtis, the, um. Sometimes if you have a term, I call it a term sheet, but all the different issues since you've thought about. Ahead of time, maybe you distributed that to everybody and that helps everybody catalyze their thinking pro or con or. Commentary on each particular area, as opposed to just waiting to see what everybody brings in two weeks.
I think that's a good idea.
Through the chair though, send, everything goes to Joe. I mean, he's the guy.
Yeah, just as a, a way to advance. You know, the, the group thinking and individuals thinking.
Well, it strikes me as if we follow Curtis's suggestion. Um, and each of us comes in with kind of what they think the key steps are that were, how the process ought to move forward. Jeremy, don't you think we'll sort of create that, you know, kind of the, the term sheet of key issues out of that conversation?
Oh, I, I think you most would, I was just trying to accelerate it, I guess, for, for everybody.
Wait, yeah, I. Jeff, you know, and, and committee, I just think, let's, let's come back together in two weeks, uh, everybody should, um. Be prepared to, to discuss and or defend, um, their, their preferred direction and what they think. Our focus and efforts ought to be, um, for the next phase of this committee and let's see, kind of see where that comes out.
Just for the record, I will prepare mine, submit it to the chair. And ask to distribute it in advance, so you'll have a chance to look at it before we get here instead of, you know, surprising people at the meeting. And if anyone else chooses to do that, that might be helpful, but I.
That's, that's fine by me.
Can I second Jeff, Jeffrey's, uh, suggestion that since Curtis has done a lot of like work on. The issues, I've, I've seen a lot of the material. I think it would be easy for you to do a term sheet that would just kind of be like a cheat sheet for us. While we're going, while we're listening to each person go through stuff, I think it just would help to corral.
I'll do anything that you want to be helpful.
So.
Walk on burning coals. It's not a motion, it's a suggestion.
Is the term sheet like more the anatomy of, um, potential town council? Or is the term sheet like these kind of overarching topics that involve questions and.
Well, I think questions like separate zoning boards, separate FinCom, those would be, is that, that's what I'm thinking.
What's in the charter? That's his focus, so that's what he's gonna do, if you wanna do one, that's something different, sorry, Jeff. If you wanna do one that asks different questions, there's no reason that we can't have more philosophical discussion. I don't personally need more philosophical discussion, I'm very process minded. So I only care about the process and what's achievable, I mean, that, that to me is what, what's gonna be a challenge. But we've overcome a first hurdle, which is getting people to vote for Curtis's article last year. I mean, I, I think that was a really big step, um, I think people don't realize what was in it. So we're gonna have to re-educate them potentially, you know, but. I think if we can make steps forward, then, but if you have certain questions that you want answered, I think with. Everybody should feel like they should put those forward and get those answered before you get into them more granular.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm more uncomfortable with the granular, so far just had a lot, I think, less experience in some of the, in local government, especially in, like, Nantucket government. Um, so I just, I see my, my delivery next week being less like that, and less granular. I, I guess I kinda wanna make sure that's a peg too.
I mean, I, I think the purpose of the exercise is to identify. What question people still have that outstanding and whether they're large or small. And I think really what happens is you can identify common issues and see what are really outstanding if they're through what. You know, all nine people have the same idea or the same question, I think it points you in one direction, if it's. A singular person with a singular issue, that may be something that's easier to address, but it still needs to get addressed. But I think you're, what you're looking for are those commonality points to go through. And you can still answer all of the rest of the questions, but then at least it gives you areas to focus, to try that the rest was common.
Mr. Chair. Sure, just something to throw in general, um, with, and no, no, just in the month, again, in most general sense. That if the idea is for the committee to come up with something for ATM twenty twenty five. That is going to be a very full warrant with stuff like our island home, et cetera, just thinking about. You know, when it's ordered and what's, what's on there and how much debate and who's there and all those things are something that the committee should. Obviously be considering as, as we move forward.
We're just gonna say it too, time is running short for ATM twenty twenty five.
Well, November, if, if we do it, right? And, and the select board can put it on until January.
But, or so. I'll say that that's seven months away.
Well, we only, we'll fix it next week and give it to them right away, maybe we can get on this fall special.
But, and, and I also think, I know it's been my personal position. I would rather put out a quality product that I think we all feel is done correctly than, well, than to compete, so. All right, Joe. You're on mute.
Sorry about that, um. One of the things that Kelly was saying that ma- just made me think that, you know, if there are, um, folks on the committee who feel that. Retaining open town meeting, that perhaps representative town meeting or some modifications to town meeting. Are, are avenues that we should, we should pursue or make better sense to them than going forward with town council. Uh, I would just ask that next week that they articulate those reasons, um. So that, you know, that the rest of us kind of know what the sticking points might be or what the different directions might be.
If I could just add, I think also what might be helpful is if, when we're going through and kind of, uh, picking out like. How we want this charter to, what's in it and what's not in it, which I'm probably more interested in what's not in it than what's in it. No, I, if we do that, I think we can get people from those various groups, like to come in and talk to us along the way. Like, we don't have to just sit here and, you know, talk about how this works. But for example, when you get to the zoning piece, we probably need to have a number of people who are involved in that, maybe we have Leslie come back, we have elected members. We have NPEDC members, like, you know, we're gonna have some people on the way who I think. We might want them to weigh in or just give us their, their perspective.
I think we're gonna get bothered when we bring these things up.
I think that's fine.
People will come.
We want opinions. Everybody represents something. It would be good for us to know, like, what it's gonna push back on, you know, so we want.
Are we going in the right direction, is what you're saying.
Yeah, I think so.
I think the first step is to commit to drafting a term. This will make sense, that'll be on my sheet for two weeks, so. Anyone else on, on this topic? Before we move on to next on the agenda, which is public comment or questions, I know we don't have any, but here's fifth. All right, so just to kind of recap, we'll, we'll add that as the primary agenda item, um, in two weeks for June twelfth. Just to have kind of our round table with talking points there, anything else anyone wants to add to the agenda? Or if you do in the interim, uh, email Joe and I and we'll get it on there. Unless anyone else has any other comments, I guess we'd entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor of Joe? Curtis?
Aye.
Kelly? Joe, ayes, Kelly?
Oh, wait, you guys should send around your article you did last year. It was last year or two years ago?